I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of today, November 27th, 2017. And with that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Senior Planner Siampa to offer that, to lead us in it.
(inaudible)
Madam Secretary, if you could please do roll call.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Thank you. First item, A, approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of the prior Planning Commission to consider.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
One second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. The minutes are approved 5-0. Item, next item, Item B, Public Comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available from Secretary Sharkey. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than that scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the planning, public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Madam Secretary, do we have any speaker slips?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item C, Consent Calendar. We have an item on the consent calendar this evening. Does anybody request to remove or discuss an item on the consent calendar, either a Planning Commissioner, city staff, or a member of the public? Seeing nobody wants to pull anything from the consent...
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. The consent calendar passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving on. Item D, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 17-0009, and Minor Site Development Permit, SDP 17-0033M, to demolish a single-family residence and construct a new 5502-square-foot single-family residence, retaining wall in the rear yard setback that is over six feet in height, and to locate the pool equipment in the side yard setback for a property in the residential single-family four zone located at 107 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner John Champa will give the staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner on this project, which is the Shire Residence. The property is located within the Monarch Bay community. It's located in the RSF4 zoning designation. The project site is improved with a 2,300-square-foot single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. As you can see here from the aerial photo, the property does back up to the boundary between the City of Laguna Beach and the City of Dana Point. Just to give you a little background on this property, the house was originally constructed in 1965 where it received a variance for a 16-foot front yard setback. That variance is still applicable today with the proposed development, and the site plan is reflective of the proposed setback. There we go. So here are the existing conditions of the property. As you can see, it's a one-story residence, and with the photo off to your right shows the back of the property with the existing pad elevation and then the slope down to the back of the property. Project proposed today is for the demolition of the existing house and the construction of a new 5,500-square-foot single-family residence, attached garage, and pool. Project requires coastal development permit because it's proposing a new home located within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. Our minor site development permit is also required for the retaining wall over six feet in the rear yard setback, which is proposed at 11 feet, as well as to locate the pool equipment within the side yard setback. The property, or the project, was reviewed and approved by the city, or by the Monarch Bay Homeowners Association. The coastal development permit, as previously discussed, was required for this project. It does meet the requirements for the coastal development permit, given that the site is within an existing private community, does not impact any of the public access, recreational areas, or environmentally sensitive habitat area. The project, as proposed, is compatible, or complies with the applicable development standards with the exception of the minor site development permit, which will be discussed later in this presentation. There we go. So this is the site plan of the project. As you can see, it complies with all of the required setbacks. The front yard setback is dimensioned at 16 feet, which was previously mentioned where the variance was issued. The rear yard setback provides approximately 35 feet for the project site. This is the front elevation. As you can see, it is essentially the same height as the existing structure and would appear as one story from the street view. However, there is a subterranean or lower level that is proposed as part of this where additional square foot and living area is proposed. The minor state development permit, as previously stated, is requested for the pool equipment to be located within the five-foot side yard setback. The proposed pool equipment specifications are included as a supporting document, which identifies the equipment to run at 45 decibels, which is below the city's requirement of 50 decibel maximum. Once the pool equipment is installed, if approved, the equipment would be required to be inspected and verified to comply with the city's noise ordinance and the required decibel level. The other site development permit is required for the retaining wall at the back of the property to exceed six feet within the rear yard setback. The retaining wall is proposed to be up to 11 feet to retain the one and a half to one slope at the back of the property. The wall would stabilize the slope and provide additional outdoor living area for the property. Landscaping is proposed to soften the view of the retaining wall, and city staff has received a number of letters in opposition and concern related to this improvement and were provided at the DIAS, as well as forwarded to your email earlier today. Proposed retaining wall, as you can see here in the cross-section, is located at the back of the property, ranging in distance from 3.25 feet from the rear yard setback, or from the rear property line, to 3.75, I believe, from the rear property line. As you can see, the photos in the lower portion of this slide identify the potential landscaping that would be provided to provide, to have additional screening and soften the appearance of the wall. A photo on the right, left-hand side of this slide gives just a visual perspective in terms of the steepness of the slope for the site. This is just an aerial perspective of this area, showing the neighborhood. The homes on the left-hand side are in the City of Laguna Beach. Homes on the right-hand side are part of Monarch Bay Community in the City of Dana Point. As you can see, there are some improvements located within the slope area for some of the adjacent properties, as depicted here in this slide. Project requires findings in that it comply with the certified local coastal program, as well as consistency with the city's zoning code and compliance with the findings for the coastal development, or the coastal development permit and the minor site development permit as identified by staff in the staff report and presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the subject application with the attached conditions in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Couple of quick questions here for you. So just so I'm clear, because I thought I saw in the notes, or not notes, but in the staff report, we were going 10 feet. Now, is it 11 feet is the max height of the wall, or minimum?
That's the maximum height proposed. The wall is at its lowest point, which is at the northern portion of the lot. At the rear of the property is approximately seven and a half to 7.2 feet in height.
Okay. And then, as it relates to that, to a rear property wall, it's common to see a six-foot wall right on the property line or right adjacent to the property line. Is that, am I missing something, or is that...
That is typical. This property actually has a wall or a fence that's landscaped along the property line that's shared with the adjacent owner. That is landscaped, and we could show you that from the aerial photo as well.
Okay. And do we have a requirement for a rear fence?
No.
So you don't have to have a rear fence?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, on the pool, do we have any setback requirements for a pool? Is that considered a structure, since it's underground, it's not considered a structure?
There's a minimum setback of three feet, from the side or the rear.
So if I had a house anywhere in the city, I could put a pool in the backyard and get it as close to three feet to the property line?
That's correct.
Okay. That is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Was, is there an existing retaining wall now?
There is a form of a retaining wall at the back of the property. It's broken up stones. I could show you from one of the photos, if requested. Yeah, so you could potentially see a little bit of that wall there. As it meanders is where that broken up retaining wall is.
How tall is that wall?
It's maybe, it's maybe 18 inches.
Okay.
It's fairly short.
Could, could the improvements be made without the retaining wall?
No. As far as the backyard improvements, no. Retaining wall would be required, or those improvements would need to be relocated to an area that would not require a retaining wall.
What's the existing height of the roof now?
I believe 13 to 14 feet. Let me verify. 13 feet.
You said the, the property on the side, the five-foot area setback, but it says 610 to 68. Is that...
That's correct. The applicant is providing a greater setback than what's required for the home.
And who monitors the, the decibel levels? Is that the city?
The city will mon, will confirm the decibel level is below or at the city's minimum requirement of 50 decibels. However, if there is an issue where the equipment is not performing to the specifications and the verification, the applicant will need to make any necessary modifications or mitigation necessary to bring it into compliance.
Could you put up the picture that shows the property with the two adjacent properties?
Are you talking about the aerial photo?
Yeah, I think so.
I may have passed it. Are you looking for the other one?
No, that's, the one, there was another one that was closer, yeah.
Yeah, let me get to that. There we go.
So the property, to the, on the top, it looks like it has a retaining wall now. Significant?
Yes, it does, with the, with the larger pool at the northern portion of the lot.
And on the Google Maps, it shows the one to the south, below that, has a similar retaining wall?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Opal? Vice Chair Murphy?
No, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Following on Commissioner Donner's questions, do you know the approximate height of the walls, the neighboring walls?
The pad elevations are essentially the same, same pad heights. So I would assume that they're fairly the same. There might be a component of the improvements that are a deck, which can't, which would be supported by posts, so there may not be a full wall. However, where the pool is located, there would need some kind of retaining wall to do that. So I can't confirm that it's actually all wall, however, the actual heights of those structures are all essentially the same height.
Okay, thank you.
Because they share similar pad heights, elevations.
Thank you. And just to confirm, the, this over six-foot-high wall is not a proposed variance, but it's approvable with the minor site development permit, correct?
That's correct.
Has there been proposed to be any fall protection at the top of the wall?
The applicant has discussed that with staff and is hoping to put just landscaping as a required buffer to not require any kind of fall protection to comply with the building codes, to avoid doing that. However, if upon construction, it's determined, ultimately determined that some kind of guardrail is required, I believe we discussed that it would be a clear glass guardrail. I can let the applicant verify that, if necessary.
Okay, thank you. And on the, on the front yard with the variance up front, it looks like currently the, the property enjoys a variance across the garage. Is that a four-car garage?
It's, it's a two-car garage.
But it's, the structure there is wider than two cars, right? Is there some workshop component or something?
Oh, the exist, the existing garage.
The existing.
It is three-car garage now.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is, are, is there additional structure that's encroaching in a new configuration as opposed to the existing, right? So like, the existing variance was for, okay, a certain width of structure gets, is encroaching, and I'm wondering if there's now more structure encroaching in the front, and maybe you want to be looking at that while we're receiving public testimony?
Well, the, there, as part of this variance, there was a couple of variances that were issued along this street, which just essentially established a new front yard setback. It was not specific as, in terms of what portion of the structure was allowed to encroach. It was specifically just to reduce the front yard setback.
Okay, thank you. That's all for my questions. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, and residents of the public are, would love to have any comment. Looks like we have some speaker slips. Thank you. So I'll call your name, and as a reminder, you have three minutes to, to give your comments, and after that, bells and whistles start going off. First speaker is Alan Teta.
Commissioner and, Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Alan Teta with Trey Architecture from Carlsbad, California. We're the architects for the project. Really, I'm here just to answer questions. We're excited about this project. We feel like the architecture is very much improving a house of 1965 caliber. The house is actually very dilapidated right now. It needs a lot of TLC, which has pushed us into this tear-down, rebuilt condition. And my clients, they've, they've lived in the community for three and a half years, and they're very much in tune to property values and sensitivity to the neighborhood. So we have worked really diligently with the city, with Jonathan, on all aspects of the home, including the retaining wall and the architecture. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer any. Thank you.
Next, Alan and Janet Schirmer. How do you pronounce your name?
Schreier.
Okay.
Just want to reiterate what Alan said, is we've lived in the community for three and a half years. We really enjoy it. We have three daughters, and we're just looking to, you know, build a home that has amenities consummate with the neighborhood. And, you know, we want to be sensitive to all the rules, regulations. We've gone through that whole process through the Monarch Bay Association as well, and we're just trying to comply with everything that we need to comply with to enjoy our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have three daughters, and fortunately, one has graduated from college, living, living away, and others at college, and the other will be at college next year. So they're moving on, and we're proud of them.
Next speaker is Tim Vermilia.
Tim Vermilia, I'm on the street in front, on South La Cenda. We don't share a property line, but I'm next door to the, I guess it would be the west. And I'm opposing the project solely on the basis of the kind of overreach of that, what that retaining wall is going to allow for them to, to come all the way out to their property line with their usable deck space, which, if you look at the grades, and I came in earlier and spoke with Jonathan about the grades, and I think they're at, I don't know, on the, on the slide, it was showing the pads on that in Monarch at 147, or whatever it is. Well, our street slopes down, so what you have is this kind of elevation issue. So the house next door, it's not as dramatic. So if they're at their property line, looking at the view, it's not as dramatic of a height difference. As it runs along the street, it increases. So the idea that 11 feet at the corner of their wall is going to be, I'm not exactly sure what the pad elevation is below, but it's going to be pretty great, and it's going to increase as it goes down the street. So where are my neighbors to do that? And if the neighbors on the other side, it creates a little bit of a, an issue as far as you have this heightened, heightened mass that's right behind you instead of a two-to-one slope going back, which the homes are already graded up, and it's already a significant elevation. And if they were to be able to come all the way out to their property line, it's going to be a big wall right in our backyards. And, you know, I understand, they want to see the view, they want to see the sunset and all that, but if, if they're standing against their property line, they're looking, they're looking down on all of us, and it's, it's not an ideal privacy situation for any of us. I think, looking along the street, everyone's been pretty amicable with the neighbors as far as hedge heights and things that would be considered of their views. So that's kind of our only play on our side, is if we feel like they're lurching over us, we need to plant some hedges, and that's not really benefit to what they want. So it's, it's, I feel allowing them to come out on that retaining wall is going to set a precedent that's not going to be good for at least our side, but for their side, I think it's going to not be good either if people start planting hedges to get them back and remove that view. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mary Gilmore. And if you could please also state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Mary Gilmore. I live at 93 South La Cenda in Laguna Beach. I live a few houses down from Tim. And I'd like to reiterate and perhaps clarify about the property to the north of the one that's being developed. Its elevation is pretty much level to, those two properties are pretty much level, but the grade within the community downslope from them, the downslope homes continue to have a lowered elevation. So the, from the toe of the slope to the top of the slope is a greater height for the 107 than it would be at 105, and that would be true for 109, and, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way on the numbers. Their 107, the one to the north would be, would be 109, and the one to the south of them would be 105. So as the houses go further towards the ocean, the distance of the slope is greater. So the, you may or may not know that Monarch Bay property was developed in the 60s and 70s, and in doing that, a whole tonnage of soil was brought in to change the level of, of that land to give those homes a better view. I have a letter. I don't know if you want me to read any of these or not. A few oppositions have been submitted to Jonathan. I have one that hasn't, and there were some that I don't know if you've received, that I have copies of as well. But there's one that does not have a computer. It's an elderly woman who's not able to be here because of mobility issues, and she is directly on the western side of their property at the toe of their slope. You want me to read it, or just submit it for your review later?
Well, I'd say you have three minutes, so you can do what you like with those three minutes. If you, if you want, you can read it, or we can kind of, you can pass it around to us, and we'll scan it.
The crux to the matter is the, although, she states, although I strongly believe property owners should not be overly restricted in building the home they want, the scope of the described plan greatly concerns me. Tearing apart the slope, adding additional fill, and a pool of water will increase the load, and the potential of damage to nearby homes and the ocean. Of equal concern is having a patio, spa, and pool past the top of the slope, many feet above my patio, and only a few feet behind my property line. This would encroach on and diminish the use, enjoyment, and value of my property. Of greatest concern to me is the chance of coming major earthquake in this area. Such a quake would surely impact the integrity of your proposed pool and its location, water, concrete, equipment, et cetera, breaking down with no place to go but thundering through my property adjoining areas and into the ocean. In quake-prone Southern California, anything is possible. I believe I'm finished. So I will make sure that Jonathan has all of the, all of the letters of opposition. I know that he has forwarded some of those to you, but I don't believe you've received all of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually, if you could submit them over here to the Secretary Sheena, she'll take those for you.
93 South La Cenda. 93 South La Cenda. Thank you. Next speaker, Yvonne English.
Hello, Chairman and Planning Commission members. My name is Yvonne English, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I'm also a landscape architect and working on this project with the Schreiers. Jonathan, can you, he's got slides. Can we, stop me until he brings them up? They're not up yet. I'm glad I was able to speak after some of the concerns came up. Because what I did as a landscape architect is I analyze the exterior of properties, and I analyze the impact that it's going to have on some of the neighbors. So one of the things I want to point out is that there is a one and a half to one slope in the backyard. And today, that would not be permitted. I work in a lot of new developments, and it's always a two-to-one slope or gentler. So that's dangerous no matter what. And actually, to stabilize the soil, I think it's better to put in a well-engineered retaining wall to protect the residents below rather than to let it go as it is today. I used to be an engineer, sorry. So what I have here is an example of showing the picture from 83 South La Cenda Drive in Laguna Beach. And you'll see the picture on the top, the top center and the top right, showing that that whole corner is completely filled with plant material that is between eight and 10 feet high already. And even if they put a screening plant in there, most of the hedges can't get more than 12 feet unless they planted trees. So we wouldn't really be blocking any views from the southermost property. And on the bottom right in each one of my slides, you're going to see I have the property, and I have the adjacent properties that are off of Google Earth. So you'll see that we have the existing fence, which I believe is at, if I look at it, the top of the wall all the way along is going to be 147. So that existing fence is at 144, so that's three feet lower than the existing fence that's there today. And with the plant material on, it's at least 145. So there's only two feet of difference between the top of the wall and the plant material at the most. And we're putting plant material over that wall, so you wouldn't notice it. The second one that was just spoken about was 81 South La Cenda Drive. And that is directly behind the property we're working on. And I actually have some elevation drawings here that show if the people on the lower level were sitting on their patio, there's 45 feet to get to the center of the pool. And I show the existing plant material in green on the left. There's going to be trailing plants over the wall. There's going to be a three-foot hedge behind the wall. And that's the reason there's plant material all the way along the back of the wall that prevents anybody from falling over, because they're not going to walk in there. And that's per code. And then, so the existing fence that is there today along the back of the wall is actually lower, I mean higher, than what we're proposing for the top of the structures with the spa and the fire pit that's going in. And I do want to point out that that distance is, that the house is actually further back than it was today, it's going to be. So they'll even have a better view, I believe. And the last one, which is at 79, Jonathan, can you forward me? Thanks. And the last one shows the property at 79 South La Cenda in Laguna Beach. And I marked on the site plan, this is from the existing topo, the initial drawing done by the civil engineer, shows that there's a garage wall entirely along that property. I pointed out in the drawing, I show where it's located, and I show how they won't be impacted at all because their garage is blocked totally from the wall that's going to be generated and all the work that we're going to be doing. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this subject? Yeah, why don't you come up, give us your name and address? And then, after you speak, please fill out a form.
After I speak. Good evening. I'm John Gilmore. I also live at 93 South La Cenda. And I'd like to make two points. First of all, Jonathan mentioned that the retaining walls at the rear of the property already exist at the property to the north at 107. Correct? That's what you said. There are some retaining walls in the rear of the property to the north of 107.
I think I followed up on that, that some might be decks, some might have a wall. I wasn't sure if the property to the north had a wall for the pool component of the back of their property or not.
But as Tim pointed out, there's a great elevation that changes as you move towards our property down at 93. So a retaining wall here would be a maximum of 11.5 feet. And as you go towards that other property, the retaining walls diminish. So if there are existing retaining walls, I predict that at one end of the property, it would be six to seven feet. At the other end, probably much less. So I don't think it's apples and apples. Secondly, the main concern that we have is privacy. And when, I'm sorry. When Yvonne talked about the landscaping proposal, she was comparing elevation of the existing level of fence on the property to the proposed wall and shrubbery that would exist by the pool. However, the existing fence is set back 30 feet from where this new retaining wall would exist. So you're comparing this height to this height. This is existing, this is proposed, and we're saying that this is like this. Yes, but right now, it goes like this. So there's a huge 25-foot buffer between the properties in three, actually, and properties in Monarch. That entire buffer will go away. 15 feet, I didn't.
The 45 feet was from the neighbor's property way in where they had their patio to where the middle of the pool is.
Yes, so the measurements you were talking about in terms of height were comparing.
Mr. Gilmore? If you could address the commission and not the public, that'd be great. Thank you. You have 30 seconds. That's what that beep means.
Yes. I didn't know I could interrupt people who were speaking.
Well, yeah, if they could, please not interrupt the speakers too.
Okay. So in summary, I'd just like to say, I'm opposed to this primarily because of the privacy issue to our property and neighboring properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Are there any other, anyone else wishing to speak that hasn't already spoken? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And the commission will discuss the item. Do we have anybody that wants to lead off?
John, could you, excuse me, do me a favor and throw up the slides that the landscape architect, there you go, perfect. And then go to slide, that one. One more, the one that showed, so I think it's two. Yep, perfect, okay, great. So I, I think the house looks great, the new, the proposed house. So congratulate, or kudos to the architect. It's an interesting style. Cottage farmhouse, not sure what it is, but I like it. But I'll get to the point here. So I, I've looked at the project. I've read all of the letters that have come in today, heard the testimony. I've visited the project site. And I'm in full support of this. These retaining walls are not new. If this was a natural coastal bluff, we would be having a different discussion. But this is a manufactured slope. If I actually read the project plans correctly, most of the dirt is going to come right off the site when they dig out the basement. It conforms to our coastal plan. It's not located between roadway and requires any type of special easements. I don't see any adverse impacts. I've heard the testimony about the geological concerns. And I've also read the geotech report that's attached to the plans. And it's clear that they're well-versed in stabilizing any type of a fill. And a 10-foot wall or 11-foot wall is not hard to do. There's no habitat here, there's no changes to any of the natural landforms, and it's completely compatible with its neighborhood. You know, as a, from a privacy perspective, you know, privacy is a two-way street. And the way I look at this, there's much more privacy today, or not today, when they build this new retaining wall and put this hedge in than there is currently. There's no requirement for a fence, there's no requirement for any property owner to shield view. And the reason most people put in fences is because they don't want their neighbor looking at them. So I imagine that the same concerns that the, some of the speakers have discussed exist with the homeowner who's going to be living on this property too, and they don't want people looking in. So if they can be seen, then I would be pretty sure they're going to block that view. That is if they want to, because we don't regulate privacy here. So for those reasons, and because it meets, you know, all of our standards, I would be in favor of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Donner?
I concur with Commissioner Nelson. I think the project's excellent. I think it's well-thought-out. And I should also point out that Dana Point has no view protection regulations. The adjacent properties on both sides have retaining walls. The geotech report seems like that should not create an issue. The Monarch Bay community, the association has approved the project. And I'm, I see nothing that wouldn't cause me to approve this also.
Thank you. Commissioner Opal?
I do support the project. The only thought that I had was similar to Chairman McAn was the question as to whether or not there was going to be any guardrail on that wall. And it sounds as though the shrubs that they are putting in there will take the place, or if there's any issues, that they would consider adding that later.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy?
Yes, I just have one quick question for staff. Since there, this was, there was a variance in 1965 through the county of Orange. And my question is that, does that mean the variance runs into perpetuity regardless of the ownership? So if this house would change ownership, the variance would still be viable. Is that correct?
That's correct. The variance runs with the land, not with the property owner.
Just wanted to make sure, because some of them are a little odd. So, okay. I agree, I agree with what has been said. I think we've all looked at this and looked at the potentials given the slopes and the proximity of the houses. And it looks like a very lovely house, so I think it's a great project.
Thank you. I too have heard the testimony and studied the issues and am supportive of the project. I do have a couple of issues similar to Commissioner Opal. I'd like the, I'm not quite sure how the condition is worded right now relative to kind of guardrail fall protection on the wall. But I'd like to make sure, and I understand that they want to pursue landscaping as a hedge to do that. But I'd just like to make sure that the condition is strong enough to where the building department has to be satisfied that that serves as appropriate, you know, code-required fall protection. And if not, that we come in with, or have a condition triggers compliance with IBC-approved guardrail. So that's one thing that I'd like to see, is just kind of more strength or clarity on that issue. And I also think if, staff, if, maybe you could point out, can we condition, I think we should condition that the wall be appropriately screened with, you know, adequate-sized plants. I mean, it's been represented that they're kind of cascading over the top of the wall to soften it. You know, can we specify or require some adequate-sized plants that that happens more quickly for the neighbors to the west? Is there a condition like that in the conditions right now?
Staff has a condition placed for the landscape design essentially. However, the size and maturity of the landscaping is not reflected in the conditions. So at your request, staff can incorporate that into the condition. I believe it's Condition of Approval 47.
Okay. Well, I guess with that, I'd like to make a motion. And see if I have support of my fellow commissioners. I move that we approve Coastal Development Permit CDP 17-0009 and Minor Site Development Permit 17-0033M to demolish a single-family residence and construct a new 5503 square-foot single-family residence retaining wall in the rear yard setback that is over six feet in height, and to locate the pool equipment in the side yard setback for a property in the residential single-family floors on located 107 Monarch Bay Drive. With the strengthened condition that the wall have required fall protection as required by the building department, either via landscaping or structural, you know, construction. And that planning staff have discretion to require mature enough plants to their satisfaction that provide some softening and screening of the wall. And that's my motion.
I just have a question. How would staff oversee that as the years?
Let me go in second for discussion purposes.
So I can tell you that we're looking at the conditions of approval as they're drafted right now. And right now, there is Condition of Approval Number 14, which requires a separate permit from the building department for all retaining walls. So I would assume as part of that process, the building department is going to be looking into whether or not guardrails are required per the building code. I don't know one way or another, because I'm just a lawyer. But they'll sure be able to tell us that. In addition, there's Condition of Approval Number 48, which effectively allows the Community Development Department to review landscape plans before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So with respect to the tree issue, that's when that review will come into place.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Does anybody else want to discuss?
Yeah, I'd want to chat about a couple of things. So I'm not sure, so when you say, so does 48 address the issue with making sure that they have adequate landscape?
Yeah, I think basically with what City Attorney said, that both issues are incorporated into the conditions. It's at their future discretion to decide, you know, is this compliant or not?
So your motion would then just remove your?
Yeah, yes. Okay, so it sounds like I'll remotion to just have it straight without my special caveats.
Second.
Okay, if we could vote. That item passes 5-0. Congratulations. Moving on. Old business, there is no old business. New business, Item 4. Preliminary review PA 17-0075 for a general plan amendment variance, conditional use permit intended parcel map to legalize the non-conformities of the site to allow a condominium conversion for the apartments at 33950 and 33952 Copper Lantern Street and 33961. Before we have a staff report, I believe Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself because I live within the 500-foot proximity of the project location.
Okay. We'll miss your contribution up here. Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Nelson has left the room. So with that...
So with that, do we have a staff report?
Yes, and it's the John Champa Show tonight. Take it away.
Good evening, Chair, planning commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the preliminary review before you. So the project that we are doing a preliminary review is located within the RMF 14 zoning designation and is a 7,900-square-foot lot. The preliminary review, oh, it's going rogue on me here. There we go. So the preliminary review allows the planning commission to provide the applicant feedback on a potential project prior to them doing a formal submittal of a discretionary permit. The objective of the review is for the planning commission to identify issues and possible solutions pertinent to the project. Feedback should be focused on identifying the potential issues which may be raised during the formal submittal. Just to give you a little background with this property, as included in your staff report, the site is developed with three separate single-family dwellings, which were constructed between the 1950s and 60s while under the county of Orange jurisdiction. Unit A converted one of the garages to a rumpus room or a family room and also added a carport. As part of the addition of the carport, a variance was issued to reduce the setback for the carport along the northern property line. A lot line adjustment was also approved and issued for unit B because the structure was placed partially within the ride of way. Variance was also issued for unit B for a reduced exterior side yard setback along Copper Lantern. The project, if formally submitted, would require a general plan amendment, variance, conditional use permit, and a tentative parcel map. These would be necessary to legalize the non-conformities associated with the property, increase the density of the site to allow for four units, and allow for the condominium conversion of the apartments. This is the existing project site. As you can see towards the center of the screen, unit B, the lot line adjustment as it moves around the structure, the setback there ranges from two to 1.7 feet. And then you can see just the placement of the structures, and we'll get into some of those setbacks associated with them later in the presentation. The property requires a number of variances as outlined in your staff report. One of the first ones is for parking. These are associated with not only the number of parking, but also the location and dimension of the interior-covered parking spaces that are provided via the garage and/or carport. The parking required is four covered and three uncovered spaces, and only five are provided, which are all covered. Four of the parking spaces are undersized, as you can see from your plans on, as far as the interior dimensions, they don't provide the necessary 20 feet deep by 10 feet wide. This is a table of the parking for the site, identifying the required parking and provided parking. Each unit, or proposed unit, will provide at least one, or at least one parking stall. Unit B does provide two parking, covered parking spaces, however, those do not meet the city's minimum interior dimension requirements. Some setbacks, variances would be necessary for the project. As you can see, I have highlighted the necessary set, or the setback issues associated with the site. As you can see, unit A is located in close proximity to the front property line, approximately seven and a half feet. Variance would be necessary for that. In addition to that, the deck, which is a low deck, however it is, built above grade, does project beyond the front property line. So that would need to be addressed as part of the formal seminal application. In addition to that, unit A and C do not provide the necessary 10-foot separation between structures. Currently, I believe it's approximately two, two to three feet. Unit B was issued a variance along Copper Lantern. However, the variance identified a specific setback and the actual existing setback is slightly less than that, as well as the setback as previously identified along Marina Drive. A general plan amendment and zone change would be required for the additional fourth unit. Just going back to this last slide, there's a unit A1 and a unit A2. A2 was converted from the rumpus room, or would be converted as a potential fourth unit for the site. So based on the density requirements for the zoning, one unit is allowed per 2,600-square-feet of lot area, which would allow for a total of three units for the site. To allow that to go beyond the necessary square footage requirements or density requirements, a general plan amendment and zone change would be necessary to accomplish that. In conclusion, staff requests the planning commission review of the proposal to provide the applicant with comments and feedback in moving forward with a discretionary application submittal. I know that the applicant, or the applicant's architect is available and would like to speak toward, to the project. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Seeing, oh, please.
For unit A, is A currently one unit or two units as it exists today?
A is one legal unit.
Okay.
As a follow-on, is it one legal unit? It's been, currently it is operating as one legal, one unit?
I believe at one time it was operating as two units because of the internal flow of the, of the space. However, I believe there was a coenforcement case that required the removal of the kitchen, so it is no longer a complete full unit.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is this a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, but we still do have to allow public comments.
Okay. So it's not a public hearing, but I am going to invite the applicant or architect to address us if he wishes. I'd like to put a five-minute time limit on that. And then we will also, it looks like we have someone else that wishes to speak, so. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Love to hear from you.
How you doing? Good morning. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Rob Williams with Studio Six Architects, representing the applicant. And he's owned the land for about a little over 10 years. And he's in the process of looking to really enhance it, not add any square footage, but re-landscape it, completely change the exterior. And in order to do that, you know, financially, it makes, you know, condo conversion would be the right way to do it. So he's asking for, right now, there are four units on the property. One, as Jonathan has pointed out, is a non-conforming unit, but I think today they have changed that, so there's three legal units on there. They changed the one bathroom, got rid of that. So right now, there, it's being rendered as three units today. The biggest issue, most of these things we can take care of. I know one of the things that is in the applicant, what Jonathan's staff report, had to do with the 2,600 square feet that's required per unit for a lot. And they recommend a general plan amendment. In talking with Jonathan prior and since the staff report came out, there's a large portion, if you look at the site plan off to the right, if you're looking at it, is not owned by the applicant. It's actually sitting on city right-of-way. So the applicant has been maintaining that for, ever since he's owned it, landscape and all that. And for a while, I guess he thought he owned it, and then he found out he doesn't own it. But he still maintains it. So instead of going through a general plan amendment, which we all know is a lengthy process and a gamble at best, is he would recommend, and that's something we would like to pursue, to purchase that and work with Public Works, work with the city to purchase that property. Doing a calculation on that, if we purchase that and we factor that into the square footage, we have, it's enough square footage there that we can get a legal four units on there based on square footage and not have to go through a general plan amendment. So that's one process. The biggest thing, you know, the setback issues are probably our biggest. The structures, we're not planning on changing the structures as far as the footprint. We are going to enhance the structures, going to re-landscape, and he wants to do a lot of remodel on the inside and sell these as condos. But he can't really move the buildings out of the setbacks. Parking, we can work out the non-conformities, we're not worried about that. The separation, the 10 feet, there's that one garage which slide and get that 10-foot separation. So parking, we can work with. We really believe we can work with the square footage. Worst case, if we can't, we'll go back to three units. We're not going to go for a general plan amendment. The biggest things that we wanted you guys to kind of take a look at is the variances, the existing non-conformities that are there. If we can work around and get the potential of get the variances for the setback, the rest of the project is details. We can work out the details to get this into it, get the other issues resolved. And so that's why we're here tonight, just kind of get a temperature from you guys, to see, you know, where you guys land on this, and then we make a decision and submit a formal application. Got any questions, be more than answering. You know, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Robin Vias?
Vias.
Vias?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robin Vias and I am a resident of Dana Point. My concern about this property is only relative to parking. I live in the Lantern Village. I am a member of the Lantern Village Association. And in the Lantern Village, most of our streets have parking issues. And most of our streets have parking issues because so many people use their garages, if they have garages, as storage and don't put cars in them. And many of the properties in the Lantern Village don't have enough of a, I call it an apron, between the driveway apron and the garage door to park off-street, not in your garage. So they park on the street. We have a lot of congested street parking. As a resident in the Lantern Village, with that condition, then if I choose to have guests over in the evenings, there's no place to park on the street because all the residents are parking on the street. So I'm glad to hear Architect Williams say that parking is not an issue. I'm here to tell you, I'm not sure that's true. And so I would request that you look very carefully at the parking and that there is adequate parking. And I don't know what the code requires in terms of number of off-street parking spaces for a construction. I know that when I remodeled a duplex here in the Lantern Village, I had six bedrooms, a total of six bedrooms, I had to have six off-street parking spots. And I do. But I don't know what the code requires when, he said tonight, the presentation is that it provides for seven, and they don't have seven, if I remember the numbers correctly, they're one short of what they required. Is that even seven? Is that enough off-street parking spaces? Maybe the city should sell them that part and like make that all parking for the complex. So that's our concern, is off-street parking. And that it's usable off-street parking for off-street, usable space for off-street parking. That's our concern, that we consider that carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And out of curiosity, were you speaking on behalf of yourself or on behalf of the Lantern Village Association?
Both.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this issue? Okay. Commission discussion. Who would like to lead out? Commissioner Opal?
Sure, I guess a couple of my questions go back to staff with respect to the major issues. One is the separation between the two units. If anything can be done for that, I don't know. And then the other one would be the, the deck that overhangs the property along Copper Lantern.
Can I interrupt for just a second? I meant to ask this earlier. This question is for city attorney. Is there, relative to this type of hearing preliminary review, is there anything that we need to know, anything that we're supposed to weigh in on or not weigh in on before we do so?
Yeah, I know we've done a couple of these in the past, but they still are somewhat unique. Basically, the purpose of a preliminary review is just to give informal feedback to the applicant. We want to be careful that we don't prejudge the application, so you cannot say, yes, I would vote for this project, or no, I would not. But if you have some concerns about maybe the way a project is laid out, about potentially the entitlements that are being requested, if the project was before you, you might give them some feedback. So really, again, it's more of an informal process. If you have any thoughts about, pretend you're sitting with a developer one-on-one potentially and having a meeting with him, and you might say, yeah, I'm not comfortable with these setbacks, or maybe you are comfortable with the setbacks, or I'm not comfortable with the parking, or maybe you are comfortable with the parking. Those are really the things we're looking for, not a, not really a commitment to vote one way or another. There are still some due process issues that we have to be wary of.
Thank you very much. So now I'll turn it over to the questions at hand.
I can respond.
Okay.
So in regards to the separation between units, as the applicant discussed, one of the biggest obstacles for this project would be the setbacks, one of them being the separation between the two structures, specifically unit C and unit A. If you look at the site plan, the garage is actually pushed pretty far back from the front of the structure. Front of the structure, the front of the structure is 20.2 feet, so there would be an opportunity to move that, and I believe that that would bring it close to, if not, into compliance with that separation setback, which the applicant has expressed that the owner would have a willingness to make some of those modifications to address the parking. So I think that would be kind of a twofold solution.
Those remaining questions and comments?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Donner?
I guess I have problems with, with making all of these changes. And I'm, and I'm looking at what's the end result for this, you know, for the owner and for the city. The, the parking is a big problem in Dana Point. It's a serious problem, and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making changes that reduce the amount of parking available.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy?
I agree with Mr. Donner. Without knowing a lot about this, it just seems like it's, we're trying to fit, we're trying very hard to fit something into, into this piece of property. And obviously, the owner is entitled to do what they want with that property, but it just seems like there's, there's a lot of pushing to try to make something work, which I can't really help him with.
Okay, thank you. My comments are as follows. If I was reviewing this project today, I would have very significant concerns about the very small setbacks that are non-compliant with what's required. I would have very significant concerns about the parking shortages, both in quantity and size. I would have very significant concerns about the density being overly dense for what's allowed for the general plan currently. I would be concerned about the inadequate separation, although that sounds solvable. In this setting, I don't know how to address the, kind of the funky, the funkiness of the right-of-way along Mariana Drive. I know if it was a new project, we wouldn't allow that, but it is existing, so I guess we'd have to live with that, although, again, the setbacks are of great concern. Without, kind of following up with Vice Chair Murphy's thing, it, it looks like there's about ten pounds of stuff in a fine, five-pound bag on this lot. So, and the owner's gotten to enjoy that over-usage and over-density for the period of time that he's owned it thus far. So those would be my kind of concerns if I was reviewing this project today. With that, is there anything we need to do special to close out this item?
Nope, I think the applicant has the direction and input that he needs from you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Williams, for bringing this project for our consideration. Can, Madam Secretary, can we invite Commissioner Nelson back in? Let the record show that Commissioner Nelson has rejoined us. Item five, appointment of planning commission member to parking and circulation oversight task force. Is there something we should know about this?
So the last meeting, I mentioned that the city council, were you all participated? I think, I don't recall if Commissioner Opel, you were on the commission at the time of the joint parking study session? Okay, sorry. So you all participated in that effort with Dr. Wilson, and subsequent to that, although it's been some months, the city council has formally created a task force called the Parking and Circulation Task Force, and they are requesting that a planning commissioner be on that, so they would formally appoint you, but you're being asked first to volunteer one of yourselves to sit on that task force, and then it would go to a city council meeting for a formal appointment.
Or appoint someone as tribute to, to the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would volunteer for that position. I'm, I really like discussing parking.
Do it, well, let's see if we have any other equally enthusiastic volunteers.
I do too.
Thank you for volunteering, Commissioner Nelson. It sounds like the tribe has spoken, and we'd love to have, be well represented by Commissioner Nelson. Moving on, staff reports. Do we have any staff reports?
Shayna, are there any notes you forgot to give me for staff reports tonight? No, so I think we're, there's nothing that I can think of to report this evening. Thank you.
I don't know if it's appropriate here or not. Quick question, do we have, we have one more hearing, meeting before Christmas, do we have stuff for that agenda right now?
We have one item for the December eleventh meeting. It's an antenna use permit application.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Donner?
Went down to the harbor, saw all the Christmas lights, they did a beautiful job, a lot of activity down there, so, looks great.
Thank you.
I'm actually looking forward to going to the harbor. I haven't done that yet, but everything else in Dana Point looks great right now, very in the spirit of Christmas.
Thank you, yeah, I would concur, and, I mean, this weekend was just ridiculously spectacular with the weather, and I know some people wanted it cooler to break out their autumn wear, but it was spectacular, so happy to be in Dana Point.
I was pleasantly surprised to see all the lights down there, because I hadn't been down for about a week and a half, and then when I went down, and this cascading lights, it was, and I did not think we would have such a beautiful display, and it seemed like all the little kids were just joyful, running around and so happy, so it's very, very nice. We're very, very lucky here.
So, yeah, great weekend. I, kudos to the sheriff's department, I was actually in the harbor, and my boat had my little dinghy engine caught on fire, and I got stuck, but I had oars, and I had every, you know, I had a safety radio and a life vest and all this stuff, and I was rowing back, getting really tired, and the sheriffs offered to tow me the rest of the way, so they rescued me from ruining my, or hurting my upper body anymore than I already had been, so kudos to them, it was great, thank you.
Did you write them a thank-you note?
Oh, I did, yes, absolutely.
How far out were you?
I broke at the mouth of the harbor, and I got it all the way to the sheriff dock. And that's a knot made for rowing it.
Right. I got pulled over on the harbor, stand-up paddling, and they asked, do you have life vests? I was like, no. That was the first time I've been pulled over. Not the first time I've been pulled over on a boat, but that's another story. Move to strike. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.